Okay, we are, I am told, at forum. So let us begin the special town meeting of the town of Halifax, August 20. At this time, I would like the town clerk to formally read our warrant. Mrs. Gaynor?
Plymouth, to the constables of the town of Halifax and the county of Plymouth, greeting. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet at the Halifax Elementary School in said Halifax on Monday, the 20th of August next, 7:30 o'clock in the afternoon, then and there to act on the following articles. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting up attested copies thereof, the town hall, Halifax Post Office, and three other public places in said town, 14 days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Hereof feel not and make due return of this warrant with your doing theron to the town clerk at the time and place of meeting as afro said. Given under our hands is 30th day of July in the year of our Lord 2018. Kim Roy, Thomas Milliers, Troy Garin, served by Thomas Schindler, Constable, on August 2nd.
Thank you, Mrs. Gaynor. Will all who are able and will all who care to, please remove your hats and join with me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening and welcome. You may know that I am very new at this job. And I have to tell you very openly and very honestly, I don't think I'm the best candidate for this job when I took on running for town moderator. I have the deepest respect for the moderators that have gone before me, but the one thing that drove me to run was seeing that no one else was running. You laugh. I wasn't, I was being serious. I have to tell you that a town is only made up because of the people who are in it get involved in it, and not just because of one issue or not just because of one matter, but because you care deeply. I have been blessed in that I have been able to be a resident of this town for 35 years. My wife Terry, my lovely wife Terry, and I have raised four kids in this town, and we owe it a great deal of debt for all of the good things that it has brought us. So I want to encourage you all who are here tonight to encourage your family and your friends and your neighbors to get involved. There are many, many positions that are open in this town that need to be filled. And for those people who sometimes get the reputation for being the loudest voices and raising the issues and being challenging, jump on a committee because they need you. They need people like you. This town is made because we respect each other and we can learn how to work together and do the right thing. So please bear with me. I know one of the real challenges for me is going to be, you can tell I have glasses, these do not allow me to see 2020. I'm visually challenged, I don't like to say disabled, but so you're going to have to speak up when you want to be recognized nice and loudly and wave around and please don't be offended if I don't see you. I don't see a lot of things on this planet, and you're just one of the nice things that I'd like to be able to see too. So please bear with me with that. A couple of things I want to let know, in case you are new to town meeting, a couple of things that we want to talk about specifically in regards to the procedure. In order for you to speak here, you need to be a resident and a registered voter. If you are not, you need to be in the special section. When you want, if you wish the opportunity to speak, you need to stand up, call out Mr. Moderator, and raise your hand and wait to be recognized. Please clearly state your name and your address before addressing town meeting. Remarks, questions, and motions need to be directed to me as the moderator. I'm responsible for trying to get answers to your questions or information that will help move our discussion along and assist us in making the best decisions possible. In terms of the process, the different warrant articles will be chosen by lottery as directed by our town bylaws. In the case where two or more articles on the warrant are related and one of them, for example Article 5, is chosen, Article 4 needs to be addressed first, then Article 4 will be brought before the town meeting, followed by Article 5. I don't believe this evening there are any of those related articles. Am I correct, select persons? I am correct. So we don't have that situation tonight. Once an article is chosen by lottery, it needs to be moved, then seconded. The proposer of the article or representative will speak to the article to explain what it is, excuse me, explain what it is and why these papers are stuck together, and the reasons for proposing it. Then I will ask for the recommendation of the finance committee. As moderator, I will then ask, is there any discussion on the article? Once discussion and/or debate has been exhausted, a vote will be taken. A voice vote will be taken if there is any doubt as to the outcome. A standing vote will be taken. In some instances, due to the sensitive nature of some articles, a written ballot may be used at my discretion and/or if there are requests of seven folks who are contesting the vote, of contesting my hearing of it. I will tell you that my vision isn't great, my hearing's pretty darn good, but again, because I took this job on, my common sense could be in question here. So just in case you're wondering. Last and most important regarding our town meetings and special town meetings, in spite of the fact that some of us hold very strong views, are passionate about our views, and the causes we either support or oppose, disrespect and unkindness will not be tolerated. Town meeting is the purest form of democracy, and it embodies our principles of free speech, but we must exercise our freedoms with responsibility. Let us now work together to have responsible dialogue that leads to productive action. Mrs. Gaynor, what's our first article to be considered this evening?
Article 9.
Article 9. Article 9 is proposed by the Board of Selectmen. I need a motion and a second?
Yes, I will make that motion, Mr. Moderator.
It's been moved and seconded?
No, no. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $9,000 for line number 53, fire chief salary of Article 4 of the annual town meeting of May 14, 2018, to be added to the $110,000 previously appropriated for the purpose for the total of $119,000 or take any action relative thereto.
It's been moved and seconded. Do I have a recommendation of the finance committee?
Actually, I'll do my explanation first, Mr. Moderator, if that's okay.
My apologies.
That's okay. I apologize, because I normally would stand up, but this mic is pretty short, so. We are very fortunate to have Jason Vaveros as our fire chief. In the five years that he has been with our town, he has been successful in obtaining an excess of $1 million in grants, $1,082,641 to be exact. This amount represents a direct savings to us, the taxpayers of Halifax. It is important to note that these are competitive grants and that not all fire chiefs are successful in grant writing. There are communities that do not receive any major grants. Not only has our fire chief saved the taxpayers a substantial amount of money, he is an outstanding manager of our fire department. Chief Vaveros is consistently reviewing ways to make our department more efficient. The largest challenge for our small community had been the engagement of call firefighters. We are very fortunate to have such dedicated, quality, full-time staff, but during a major structured fire storm or accident, having only three full-time staff assigned per shift requires a more experienced call force to work beside them during these times of crisis. For years, we have struggled with not only attracting call firefighters, but with the training and the retention of the staff, was challenging, to say the least. Today, we have approximately 25 trained and engaged call firefighters. This is a very good thing for our community. We are a safer community for having them. We have Chief Vaveros to thank for that. Two years ago, Chief Vaveros developed a plan that not only built our call force, but it has created a more engaged, integrated department. Overall, morale has improved immensely. Chief Vaveros's plan called for having a third paramedic firefighter per shift. Previous to this, we had only two of these per shift. Now, one of those shifts is regularly filled by a call firefighter. They are working more, gaining more experience, and together, our entire fire department is united and strong. Chief Vaveros's plan has also improved response times by over a minute. One minute doesn't seem like a lot of time, but in the fire service, it could mean life or death. This plan was all developed without any direct cost to us, the taxpayers. By placing ambulance fees at an average range, he was able to implement a plan to not only provide a better service, but we have collected an additional $500,000 in revenue since we made this change. Chief Vaveros has also served as our emergency and management director. Many communities pay a stipend to the person who holds this position. The town of Halifax does not. By being the emergency management director during a storm, Chief Vaveros is serving two roles. Not only is his responsibility to coordinate staff and call responses for the fire department during the height of a storm, but he is also coordinating the opening of the shelter. The chief is working side by side with National Grid to ensure that if power is lost, that is restored as soon as possible. He is ensuring that our residents stay safe, are responded to, and have a safe place to land if they are displaced because of an event. It is no easy feat. He is the person that is directly responsible. That role doesn't end when the event does. He also, in a major storm, must seek reimbursement from MEMA or FEMA for storm costs. Given all of these reasons and more, the Board of Selectmen feel that it is appropriate to compensate our chief for the good work that he is doing on behalf of our community. This past spring, we were looking at providing fire and ambulance service to the town of Plimpton. Our hope was, when the merger happened, we would be able to adjust the chief's salary. Unfortunately, the merger did not happen, and we don't believe it will in the future. I will say again that we are fortunate to have Jason Vaveros as our fire chief. We would like for him to be the chief in Halifax for a very long time. It is only fair at this point to pay him a proper wage. Salary surveys have revealed that the 10 benchmark towns of similar population, budget size, commercial split, and per capita income, the average salary of a fire chief is approximately Many of these fire chiefs are not paramedics, but our fire chief is a paramedic. Not only is he a paramedic, but he will be completing his master's degree in December. Having a master's degree is not a requirement, but it is a benefit for our community that he does have one. Although we compare ourselves to the 10 towns, oftentimes, because of residency requirements, our previous fire chiefs have gone to neighboring Plymouth County communities. Of the communities that run an ambulance service, our fire chief is the lowest-paid chief in Plymouth County. The average salary of a fire chief in Plymouth County is $145,424. Both the Board of Selectmen as well as your finance committee have unanimously supported a fiscal 2019 fire chief salary of $119,000, and for fiscal 2020, the amount will be $125,000. I will remind you of the direct financial savings that our chief has given the taxpayers of Halifax, the improved response times for our residents, and the increase in revenue that we have seen. Investing in this wage increase is an investment in our future. It is important to set a wage rate that will retain such a quality candidate, and we ask the residents here today to please support this article.
Thank you, Mrs. Roy. Recommendation of the finance committee?
The finance committee recommends.
Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Please, go forward. You identify.
Mr. Moderator, Gordon Andrews, 244 Elm Street. Just wondering why, now that we're bringing this up in a special, when it wasn't discussed at all during the annual budgeting process? We talked about budgets, we talked about cutting different budgets. While I understand the data set behind this, I don't understand the reasoning for doing it now.
Sure, I'll try to get an answer from you, sir. Mrs. Roy?
Hi. We had talked to the fire chief about doing this in the spring, but again, we were sort of waiting to see what was going to happen with the Plimpton merger. As I stated before, we were hopeful that we could combine the two departments, that we would be looking at having additional funds to be able to pay for it. That didn't happen. Again, we have a qualified chief, an excellent chief, and we want to retain this chief. And we do not want to wait until the spring to set the rates, so we're asking that it get done right now.
Yes, please.
Karen Fava, 66 Cliddeau-Bosworth. Although the chief is, you know, great for the town, I've heard great things that have happened with him, our town only has a certain budget. We can't compare ourselves to towns in Plymouth County. We're not that big. Our budget here is only able to support a certain wage, and the chief knew that when he came in.
Thank you. Sure?
I just want to remind everybody that the average of the 10 towns that we typically compare ourselves to is $116,900. Our chief, we're asking for him to make $119,000. The $116,900 is an average, and I feel that based on the qualifications and based on the information and all that he's done for our community, again, I'll talk about the grants, they are competitive grants, not all chiefs are successful in achieving those kinds of grants, that it's an investment in our future.
Yes, sir.
Mel Conroy, 7 Birch Road. I also agree that the chief has been fantastic since he's been here. I just want to know if anybody has the average tenure for the 10 chiefs that we compared to, for the comp towns?
Try to find out for you, Mr. Conroy. Do we have that question or that answer, the average tenure of police, of fire chiefs?
I don't believe I have the tenure. What I have, though, is, you know, obviously, we have the split of what the insurance is. We are a 50-50 community, and 90% of these towns are either 40 or 75-25. And I also want to just remind you that he's been with us for five years, which would place him at a higher step if he was a wage and personnel or had steps, and so, again, the experience, it's there. And, you know, again, he has done an excellent job for our community, and we are very lucky to have him. We had had quite a bit of turnover, as you all are aware, in departments and at the department head level for the fire department, and we've found a great fit. And again, he works very hard and has done an excellent job. I can't explain enough the whole engagement of the fire department, the call department, how crucial that is for our community. For many years, previous chiefs have really struggled with that, and we've tried to come up with different plans, and we've tried to work on it. And, you know, we have a department that is united and strong and working very well together. That doesn't always happen in a department, especially with call force. You know, it used to be years ago that the call force were over here and the full-timers were over here, and he's been able to really make everybody so engaged with each other and really such a team that, you know, I do feel, and the rest of the board feels, and certainly if the finance committee wants to pipe in, feel strongly that, you know, we have an investment in this chief. And sometimes you have to really look at the individual and what they're doing for our community to know. We don't want to know, we don't want another chief. We really don't.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Melinda Tarsi, Twin Lakes Drive. While I'm chair of the finance committee, I'm speaking from this microphone as a taxpayer and resident. I'm also speaking as a university professor who has students, undergraduate and graduate, who study public administration. I don't recommend my students to take internships with just anyone, but I actively recommended some of my best students to intern with the chief. He's taken on multiple interns, not just from my university, but from others, for which he receives no additional compensation, and I can't think of a better compliment that I can pay anyone than to say that I trust my students' education to him because I want them to be a leader like he is. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Alexander Mead, 382 South Street. First, I'd just like to say thank you to chief for everything you've done for us as a community. My question is kind of two-part. The first part being, how did we arrive at $9,000? I understand the median is $116,900, it's a nice round number, but how did we get there? And part two is, while I appreciate everything he's done, I feel like, you know, a $15,000 raise over two years is pretty aggressive, and obviously, it's not the private sector, but I feel like that's a pretty healthy wage increase, especially given the fact that, like Mr. Andrews had said previously, as a member of committee in the town, and I'm only speaking as a taxpayer here, but we were urged pretty hard to look for cuts. And now, here we are, six months later, being presented with additional handouts for the members of the community, when where's that money going to come from?
Try to find that out for you. Any answer to the?
Okay. So let me, I'm going to take the second part first. And that is, you're right, $15,000 over that amount, it seems like a lot of money, but think of how we haven't been paving the proper wage. And I want everybody in the room to think about the history of not paying the proper wage and how often we have seen chiefs come and go in the fire department. Why did the $119 come about? To be honest with you, the Board of Selectmen had offered a little less than that, and it was the encouragement of the finance committee that bumped it up to $119. The $119 is a little over the average for the towns. And again, we looked at all the things that he has accomplished, all the money, again, $1,082,614, a lot of money that, you know, directly would affect our wallets if he hadn't written those competitive grants. And so, again, we think of it as an investment in our future, and that's why, that's why we would like to do that.
Yep, hang on, heard you first on the finance committee.
Speaking from the finance committee, the finance committee was comfortable with the amount proposed because it not only reflects the chief's grant acquisitions, his impending master's degree, but also we have to think about retention. And eventually, at some point, hopefully way far down the road, when we think about attracting new candidates to positions, we have to be able to, even though we're a small town, price ourselves competitively. And while it may seem like a big jump, the fact is that the chief hasn't been compensated at a reasonable amount according to the other benchmark towns, which are the same as us in population, commercial base, and budget size. So the finance committee was very comfortable with the recommendation that we put forward, which is actually a little bit higher than the original number estimated, and that was how much the finance committee felt about this, having seen the rest of the budget through multiple cycles.
Heard another voice? Yes.
Karen Fava, 66 Cliddeau-Bosworth. With no disrespect to anyone in the town, we shouldn't be talking about personalities, we shouldn't be talking about, we're talking about a position, not the person. And part of that position, if I'm not mistaken, is to write grants. And we've had numerous chiefs in the past that have done an amazing job at writing grants as well, and we really, we really need to think about the position and what our town can afford. My other question is, number two, what was the number that the selectmen came up with that they recommended?
Okay, so I'm going to address the first thing. Because this is a contract, we can talk about the merits of the person. So we are signing a contract with a person, and so it is totally appropriate to discuss the things that that particular person has done for our community. And again, I want to talk a little bit about the response times, because that's pretty key, too. That plan that he came up with, adding that third person, raising the ambulance fees, and improving response time, plus engaging the call force, is really, it's really pretty amazing. And yes, we've had police, we have had fire chiefs in the past that have written grants, but not to the extent that we are getting right now. And the amount that we had, I think, asked for was $117,000, I believe. It was, no, it was $117,000 was the original amount.
Thank you, Mrs. Roy. Any other comments? Yes, yep.
Because of the sensitivity, Gordon Andrews, 244 Elm Street. Because of the sensitivity of voting over this, I'd like to request a secret ballot.
I'd like to go in the tradition, Mr. Andrews, of asking for a voice vote first to see if that would pass. Any other discussion before we get to the vote? Yes. Way toward the back, way in the back, I'm sorry.
Deborah Shoshim, on Ponza Street. I also request we do a ballot question for this, a yes or no ballot.
Tina Tonello, Lake Street. I also request we do an Australian ballot.
Karen Fava, Cliddeau-Bosworth. I also recommend an Australian ballot.
Amy Troop, Ten Hillside Ave. And I'd also would like to have an Australian ballot.
Mel Conroy, 7 Birch Road. I'd also request an Australian ballot.
Alexander Mead, 382 South Street. I also request an Australian ballot. I believe I'm number seven.
I think we're over seven now. If you, if you're aware of the bylaws that indicate that with seven people asking for an Australia ballot, that that, we can certainly go to that, if I am correct in my new duties. Other discussion before we go to the vote?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, yeah.
Mary Gravenese, 98 Cliddeau-Bosworth Road. I also applaud the chief. We've had many instances. He's wonderful. My question is, if we, if he is a contract person, he has a contract, do we have a period of years that he's going to stay with us as we are giving him this amount of money each year, and is he guaranteed to stay with us? And secondly, if he leaves, is this what we have to pay the next chief that comes in, no matter what his qualifications are?
So I'll answer a few, are you done?
Yeah, Mrs. Roy.
So, no, we cannot force the chief to stay beyond, like, we just can't do that. So we're hopeful that he will stay. And no, it doesn't mean that we have to pay the next chief, but as the chair of our finance committee stated, you know, we are all really very fortunate to have great employees and people who run really great departments. And in order to do that, we have to pay a competitive rate, because if we pay the bottom of the barrel, we may get the, attract the bottom of the barrel the next time we have to go out. So again, it's for our future that we want to set a competitive wage. But when we talk about Chief Vaveros, we want to reward him for the good work that he's doing for our community. Again, I will remind you about the emergency management position, that, you know, he's serving two roles during the storm. I know a lot of people don't see it, because during the storm, everybody's kind of bunkered in, but a lot's going on during that storm, and it's a lot to coordinate. And, you know, again, he does it flawlessly.
Any other discussion? Nope. Oh, you got to wave your hand, you know what I'm saying. You're in the front row, and I'm having trouble, so thank you.
Sorry.
No, that's all right. No, your fault.
Summer Schmeling, 32 Indian Path Road. Just a quick question, because my wheels are turning. Do you know how much the stipend is that chiefs are given that aren't, in other towns you mentioned, they have a stipend for doing?
I don't know the specific amount.
I'm going to guess, I see no further discussion, so we will be moving to a vote, and seven people have asked, by the bylaw, I believe we're bound to do that, so we will engage in a ballot, a written vote.
It was a motion. So we're not going to ask them to second.
Okay, so the motion, okay, so there was, so seven people constitutes the motion? Okay, so we have then a motion for an Australian ballot. Do I have a second?
Second.
I kind of figured we were going to get one of those. Okay, a second. So then, do we vote to take the Australian ballot, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of taking an Australian ballot on Article 9 of signify vote by saying aye?
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
Oh, gee. You know, you guys are not making my first day on the job easy. Let me try that again, okay, because that was, that was a fairly even split, and I'm trying to be fair about this. So, all those in favor of an Australian ballot, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those who are opposed?
No.
[laughing] Oh, God. All right. Yes, right. We're going to have to do a standing count for this. So, you need my counters? We do have counters? Okay. Please, would everyone, sit down, please. Everyone needs to be in your seats. Everyone needs to find a chair, please, in order to do this correctly. Ready? Are you ready, Mrs. Gainer? You ready? You ready to do this? Mrs. Gainer? Mrs. Gainer, I'm sorry. Are we ready to do this? Okay, folks. For all of those who are in favor of Article 9 being conducted by an Australian ballot, please stand and remain standing until the counters are complete, have completed their task. So this is if you are in favor of an Australian ballot for the question. What they're being asked, there's a question that's been asked, and whenever you have a question, you can ask for a point of order, and thank you. You are being asked if we, if you want the vote on Article 9 to be conducted by an Australian written ballot, then you are standing to say you agree to that. Just the manner of the vote is what you are voting on now. It has been requested by seven members, it's been moved and seconded to do an Australian ballot. It was not clear to me in a voice vote whether we had a majority in either case, so we're asking people right now to stand if you are in favor of conducting Article 9 by an Australian written ballot. Yes, question?
Mr. Moderator, question?
Yes, sir.
If the voice, if this fails, and seven people stand up and ask for an Australian ballot, then it moves to Australian ballot?
No. No. We need to ascertain whether the majority want an Australian ballot.
So it goes to a vote?
You can ask for one. You can ask for one. That's what this vote is all about right now.
So it goes to a vote?
Yes.
I thought that's why we challenged with seven people.
I'm not, yes, I'm sorry. We're going to get a point of clarification here.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I'm Charlie Sealing, the Town Administrator. In the bylaws, there's two ways of going to a paper ballot. One is what we're doing right now, which is someone moves that we go to a paper ballot, also called the Australian ballot. You have a vote whether you're going to, in fact, have a paper ballot or not. That's what we're doing right now. First, the people who want a paper ballot, stand up, say, yes, I want a paper ballot. They sit down. Then the people who don't want a paper ballot, get up, they're saying no. Whichever side wins, we're either doing a paper ballot, or we're not doing a paper ballot, on the main motion to do with Article 9. We get to our, we actually vote on Article 9. Maybe we do a voice vote, maybe we do a standing vote. If at that point, after the vote is taken, seven people say, I doubt the vote, in essence, they're saying that the moderator is incorrect in his interpretation of the vote, whether it's a voice vote, or whether it's a standing vote, then those seven people are saying, I'm challenging the decision of the moderators to which way that vote went. And I'm, those seven people are asking for a paper ballot. Then we have a paper ballot automatically if those seven people, mind you, I'm not trying to be facetious, but if the vote's 90 to 10, or 10 to 90, and seven people get up and say, I'm challenging the interpretation of the moderator about the vote, okay, you know, you can do it, but, and we'll spend a lot of time doing it on a 10 to 90 vote, or a 90 to 10. If it's close, then, you know, maybe you have a point to make. But you really want to save that challenge for something that's a lot closer, instead of something that the yeses and nos, one way or the other, are widely separated. Mr. Moderator, please go through the Town Council. It's very specific in the bylaws, the department heads, even if they're not residents, even if they're not residents, are in fact allowed to speak. That's been in the bylaws for a couple of decades now.
That is a correct reading, as I understand the bylaws. So...
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
For time's sake, then I would withdraw my motion, allow the main motion to be voted on by voice, and then we'll ask seven people to challenge.
Yeah, I'm not sure we're at that point, at this point. I appreciate your retracting.
I withdraw the motion.
You withdraw the motion? Because you're the main mover of the motion?
Well, I moved to go to the secret ballot, so I'll withdraw that. We'll move forward to the regular vote, and then I can challenge it then.
But Gordon, you had six other people that want. It's not just your motion. So you have seven other people that are requesting it.
So I would ask, Mr. Moderator, through you, to the six other people standing, I would ask them to withdraw.
Withdraw. They, that's their decision. They have to individually come up with that. Yes, Mr. Garen?
I will request that we have a standing vote instead of a voice vote. We've already went to the voice vote, and it wasn't clear.
Okay. Yes. You know, as a matter of fact, I just think, in order, keep in mind, procedures are not meant to tie people up in knots. We're trying to get an open and honest discussion. And when there are concerns about the sensitivity of issues, I understand that the voters may want to go to a vote that is not as public. I do understand that. I think for the sake of finishing and moving on, we're only on the first article here, folks, and we're going to be here a long time, what I would recommend is, let's finish the standing vote and see where that takes us. So let's, let's continue the standing vote, so I go back to the idea that you are voting whether or not to take a written, secret, if you will, Australian ballot. And what I'm going to ask is, again, we have the counters set up, and I want people to stand up if you're in favor of taking this Article 9 as a, an Australian ballot. So let's do that.
We're removing our motions.
I understand that.
So we have to go through with it.
As moderator, I'm exerting my preference in order to move this forward to, let's see where it takes us.
If it's a sensitive matter, it depends upon the vote. And some of the people may not want to vote their true feeling by standing, and that's why we're asking for an Australian vote.
You understand, we're voting on whether we're voting or not. You know, and I didn't say this at the beginning, let's, the booing or the clapping of the hands, let's kind of hold off on that, let's get things taken care of. So, again, I repeat, I'm going to exert my priority here, as Town Moderator, new though I am, to move this forward. So can we, can we go forward with a count, standing count, of whether or not you are in favor of going to an Australian ballot for Article 9? So I would ask all those people in favor to please stand, to say yes. Counters. Remain standing until the counters are finished, please. Okay. Please sit. Please, everyone, may seats. Now, for those people who do not wish to have Article 9 be handled by an Australian ballot, please stand. Yeah. Well, well, I, oh, that's true. Thank you. Oh, yeah, absolutely. Okay. Oh, yes, please. You can sit down. I'm sorry. I wanted you all to be as uncomfortable as I am up here, okay? Okay. The votes for whether we do this Article 9 as an Australian ballot are 65 yes, 136 no. So we will not be doing an Australian ballot. So what I would like to suggest is, I have no doubt that I'm going to have difficulty in determining a voice vote, so I would like to do Article 9 by a standing count. So if I can have my counters again, the, what we're going to do is, if you are in favor of Article 9, please stand. If you are in favor of Article 9, in favor of Article 9, you're standing up to say yes. Oh, I'm sorry. You can have, you're the record keeper. I get it, yeah. No, no. Better you than me. I'm a terrible record keeper. Please be seated. Now, for all of those who are not in favor of Article 9, please stand and remain standing until the counters have finished their task. So if you are not in favor of Article 9... Okay, folks. The results of the standing vote on Article 9 are that there were 47 nos, 144 yeses, the article passes. Yeah. One an hour. We're doing well. No. I want you to know that when we have to go through this, it may be frustrating, but when you have to do things like this, you get the point that every single one of you counts. So I appreciate you being patient through that. So, the next article up, please.
Article 6.
Article 6.
Mr. Moderator?
Hang on one second. I'm getting there. Proposed by the Selectmen, Mrs. Roy is...
I move that the town vote to transfer from the Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Fund, a sum of $202.90 distributed from the Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Fund to address the impact of transportation network services on municipal roads, bridges, and other transportation infrastructure, and any other public purchase substantially related to the operation of transportation network services in the city or town, including but not limited to, the Complete Streets Program established in Section 1 of Chapter 901 of the general laws and other programs to support alternative modes of transportation.
It's been moved, and I need a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
So, this, what this article does is, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts began taxing Uber runs, and the town of Halifax now qualifies to receive funds from the state on taxes charged on those Uber rides. The state gets 50% of the tax, and the town receives the other 50%. In order to accept these funds, we need to commit that these funds will go towards supporting transportation costs, like town roads, and so this article authorized the town to accept our portion of the 50%.
Thank you, Mrs. Roy. Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 6.
The Finance Committee recommends.
Any discussion? Seeing none. A miracle, all right, I like that. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of Article 6 signify by saying aye?
Aye!
Any opposed? Article 6 passes unanimously. Nice job, nice job. Next article up. Okay, the next article up is 12. It's being proposed by the Board of Selectmen. Do I get a motion?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Garen.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $4,750 in transfer or appropriate from Water Department revenues, $4,750, and transfer and appropriate from solid waste revenues, $7,000, for a total of $16,500 to repair or replace the havoc units in the recycling center office and the heating unit in the Water Department section of the town barns.
So, it's been moved, do I get a second, and? Says been moved and seconded, Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 12?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Any discussion on Article 12? Yes. Get your exercise, there you go.
Mel Conroy, 7 Birch Road. I know the Highway Department head last year had brought to the Finance Committee's attention the need for replacement of this particular building. Is there no service, you said the town barn was falling down? The salt shed, this has nothing to do with that? Okay, thank you, my apologies.
Okay, no, thank you for your question. Any other discussion? All those who are in favor of Article 12 signify by saying aye?
Aye!
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, the article passes by majority vote. Next article.
Article 4.
Article 4, being proposed by the Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator, I move we pass over Article 4.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Article 4 will be passed over, that means the town meeting will take no action thereon, the Finance Committee's recommendation for Article 4 being passed over?
The Finance Committee recommends pass over.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of passing over Article 4 signify by saying aye?
Aye!
Any opposed? Article 4 passes unanimously.
Article 10.
Article 10. To pass over, did I say that wrong? Okay, okay, Article 10. Okay, Article 10 is being proposed by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
Mrs. Roy will speak to this.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $14,566 for line number three, Town Administrator's Salary of Article 4 of the annual town meeting of May 14th, to be added to the $95,434 previously appropriated for this purpose, for a total of $110,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Article 10, and can I get a recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Article 10 is being recommended.
Okay, so, I'm just gonna do my explanation. For the past 22 years, Charlie Seelig has been a dedicated town administrator for the town of Halifax. I am quite sure at some point, the majority of the people in this room have had some dealings with Charlie. Whether it's a simple question that he has answered, a grant that needed assistance in writing, a bylaw explained, a communication on the informational board at the fire station, his many posts or answers on Facebook, or perhaps seeing him at one of our many town events, Charlie Seelig has become the heart of this community. But I should really say, he hits really the brain of the community. Charlie has such knowledge on literally every topic of town government. He is the go-to person for everyone, and Charlie's position has evolved over the years. His office is the catch-all, the complexity of the many areas that he needs to be an expert is, is so vast. When he first started 22 years ago, we had more engaged volunteers. We without a question appreciate any time that our residents have to volunteer, but the truth is, in today's busy society, the volunteers don't always have the time to dedicate as much as they did many years ago. The person who picks up the burden, the employees do, but in the case of our town administrator, most of the burden and need for knowledge falls to him. Charlie does all of this in a humble and calm demeanor. I mention his amazing mind, and we often refer to him as the book of knowledge. His mind is like a walking encyclopedia, not just on trivia questions, but on a side note, if you're ever at a trivia night, this is the guy you want at your table. But, when it comes to town government, government rules, regulation, bylaws, or grants, his knowledge is unprecedented. When we talk about the amount of money that he has saved us, not just in grading grants, but also the avoidance of legal fees, Charlie's knowledge and advice has avoided many lawsuits from developing. He is proactive in ensuring that we stay ahead of mandates and new and federal estate requirements. He has secured funding for algae treatments for our monpoms at ponds, obtained grants for us being a green community, and lobbies our senators and state reps to ensure that Halifax is receiving proper reimbursements from the state and federal agencies. The time and dedication that Charlie gives our community is extraordinary. Besides his 40 hours during the day, Charlie attends many evening meetings. For example, he attends every Selectmen's meeting, Finance Committee, Wage and Personnel, and any other hot topic meeting of the week. He is often at meetings three or four times a week, and you can also see his car regularly here on the weekends as well. As I stated to you early, his job has evolved over the years, and in some ways, in my opinion, being a town administrator in a small community can be more difficult than that of a larger community. He basically administers the same roles as a larger town does, but with less staff and less volunteers. It is difficult for Charlie to use his vacation time. I served on the Board of Directors of the Massachusetts Municipal Association, and Charlie's reputation of having great knowledge of town govern is very well-known among his peers. Oftentimes, when meeting a town manager or town administrator from another community for the first time, they would always comment to me of how lucky Halifax was to have such a great town administrator. We all know it, and we all are very appreciative of Charlie and all that he does for Halifax. Most communities have their town administrator on contact. Prior to this, Charlie was a wage and personnel employee. We had talked many times, including this past spring, of having Charlie's salary adjusted. Charlie, in his usual unassuming way, always recognized our financial limitations, but our board no longer should wait to request to pay him a fair wage. It's not fair to him or to our community. If we were to ever have to fill this reposition, we would need to set a rate so that we could attract quality candidates. If the residents want to keep the same level of service from the next town administrator, we will need to be prepared to pay for it, and we will be frank, in our opinion, we will never have a more knowledgeable, dedicated town administrator than we do have in Charlie Seelig, and we hope that he will be here for many years to come. This position is drastically underpaid and should not wait to be adjusted. To those who are feeling that this should happen at an annual town meeting, if you agree that this position is underpaid, when we do it shouldn't really matter. The average salary in the 10 benchmark towns with similar population, budget size, commercial, residential split, and per capita income is $125,360. Charlie's salary is $95,434. That is a difference on, on the average of $30,000. We are not asking for that amount. After meeting with the Finance Committee, they unanimously increased the amount that we had originally requested, and the proposed salary for this year is $110,000, $115,000 for fiscal 2020, and $120,000 for fiscal 2021. He would still not be at the average, which I would argue with his experience of 22 years, he should be above the average, but at least he would not be the lowest-paid town administrator among the 10 towns that he is today. He is a Columbia University graduate, has 22 years' experience, works well above the required hours, and saves the community money, and is such a dedicated town administrator that we respectfully request that you support paying our town administrator a fair wage, and we thank our Finance Committee for all of their support with regard to this request.
Mrs. Roy, I apologize for twice being out of order and not, not allowing you to do that before I asked for the Finance Committee's recommendation. I'm gonna kind of do this again and say, Finance Committee's recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends.
Okay. Discussion on this article. Yes, sir.
Gordon Anders, 244 Elm Street. Again, it's not about the, the adjusting the amount, I understand the data points. Again, it's about doing it mid-year and not looking at the rest of the budget. We asked all the other departments to look at their budgets, we asked them to make cuts. Now, we're up here again after that point, and we're not looking at the budget as a whole. I, I think it's wrong. And I'd also like to know, did the Finance Committee review the contract? Are there any other items in the contract?
It isn't complete until we get funding from this.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Are the, are the other terms besides money available to be reviewed at this point in time?
We're still working out the different goals and objectives, but right now, we have a special town meeting.
So, Mr. Moderator, normally what happens is, the contract is available to the townspeople to review with all the terms in it before a contract comes to vote.
Try to get an answer for you, sir. Can anyone?
I, I think the intent here was to see if we could fund the position at that level. The details of the contract are to be worked out, and if they're not in favor of the town, we just don't sign the contract. I mean, it comes down to that.
I, I may be wrong, but I think the question is, is the, are the terms of the contract available for the public to review?
I, I think the answer to that was no, they are not currently available.
Okay, thank you. Now, let's, let's, let's address our remarks through the.
Karen Thieba, 66 Clyde Obazura. I would move that we not vote on this contract until we have all of the terms. I don't think anyone wants to vote on something that we don't know what it is.
Seconded.
Yeah, that's, we need to have finished and exhausted discussion before we're gonna entertain a motion. It's already been moved and seconded, so we need to finish discussion, and then we move to vote on the article. So, there isn't, it isn't appropriate to have another motion at the moment unless you're, you've got a point of order. Yes.
The discussion at the Finance Committee centered around whether or not we could afford funding this position, and for all the reasons that Mrs. Roy has mentioned, we were comfortable with funding at these levels. You're correct in that we don't have the other parts of the contract, but those things include goals and milestones that need to be met, and for which compensation is provided. So, that level of compensation is only provided if all of those goals are met, and those goals will be reviewed very carefully, not only by the Board of Selectmen, but the Finance Committee and others. What we're trying to do right now, and what the charge of the Finance Committee was, was to see if we could fit this adjusted compensation within the budget. The Finance Committee unanimously recommended that we could fit this compensation within for all the reasons, again, that the Board of Selectmen has articulated.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, please.
I also would like to pass over this article. Oh, sorry. Marie Cody, 46 McClelland Road. The town is in its second year, maybe two and a half years, of a wage and personnel reclassification study, which Mrs. Roy is now on the Wage and Personnel Board. I feel like this position should hold until the spring, when hopefully that study is done. He is a wage and personnel employee, so we can see if we can fit all of the money into all that market data that comes back. Librarians start at $17 an hour, which might be within the benchmark, but I hear a lot of, how are you gonna attract quality people? We've gone through reference librarians like crazy, because you can't get a real reference librarian with an MLS to travel to Halifax for 18 hours a week at $17 an hour. It just doesn't happen. And if we're going to talk about personality, I can disagree with a lot of what you said, Ms. Roy. I found Mr. Seelig's actions with the wage, sorry, with the wage and personnel, a bit of stonewalling, and I have had issues, which you, I plan to write the Selectmen in a letter. So, I'm not wholly in awe, I have to say.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Alexander Mead, 382 South Street. Just some quick numbers, I'd like to point out that it's a 15% wage increase, and by fiscal year 20, between Article 10 and Article 9, my math says we're gonna expend over $34,000 in increased wages. I'm a younger guy, I'm trying to live in my house and manage my budget, but I'm failing to see how we're gonna be able to manage a budget when everybody else is being asked to make cuts.
Mr. Moderator, could I just address that, please? Again, you're totally right, it, it is a hard, a high percentage, but look at the amount that the position is underpaid, and so I just want to remind this body, again, I don't want to waste a lot of time, 'cause I know that we have a lot of other articles coming out, but I just want to remind this body that if Charlie Seelig ever left this position, we would be looking to fill it with somebody who is qualified, and we want to make the salary as competitive as we can to be able to attract a quality candidate. Again, we have somebody that goes well and above the job, in our opinion, and that what he does is, he works many, many hours, and it's a lot to juggle. I know that it's difficult to, to see that from that side, but we know, 'cause we see it. The amount of information that this person has to retain, or any town administrator has to retain, is unbelievable, and again, you're right, the previous speaker's very right. I serve on the Wage and Personnel Board, among other, other hats that I have to, to hold, because we don't always have the volunteers, because people are really busy in their lives, and we respect that, and we understand it, but the work has to get done, and the taxpayers expect a certain service and expect things to get done, and in order to make sure that you have a quality candidate that can handle the work, you want to be able to pay that person appropriately. So, you know, we have to plan for our future, but I also feel that you have somebody who has been in the position for 22 years, is a proven good employee, and it's not fair, I know I've, I've heard people say, well, that person knew what the salary was when they took the job. You know, I, I know, people would say that, but again, 22 years ago, things have evolved, and shame on, on our board for not pursuing this earlier, to be honest, because again, this, we've known that this position was underpaid, and we brought it up, and a lot of people in this room have heard me talk about Charlie being unpaid, and lower, you know, not being paid at the appropriate amount, and Charlie has not pushed this. I don't want you to think he has pushed this, 'cause he has not. He has really been so humble about this whole thing, but again, when you look at a $30,000 difference on the average, and I would argue that this person is not the average, he is not the average, he's been with us for 22 years, and again, you can drive by Town Hall on any weekend and you will see his car in that driveway, so.
Hang on. Yes, I saw your hand in the side.
Hi. Amy Trup, Penn Hillside Ave. I first want to say that we appreciate every town worker, but I think that there needs to be a balance in the town, okay? It's really, it seems to end up being a competition that any of us who are against any of these raises, which is why we asked for the secret ballot, because we're ridiculed around town afterwards because of the way we voted. So, the reason that we're asking for that is to protect our identity, and there are a lot of people who will not stand up against things or for things, depending on what their peers and what they feel, and that's why we ask for that. So, let me just tell you that there's also budgets in every single household, and in the private sectors, and in anybody who's working for themselves, we are not getting raises. As a matter of fact, we're working double jobs, seven days a week, and we're trying to make it, and then it's up, up, up. I haven't had a vacation in four years. Four years, not a. Four years, not a day off, no lie. And you can say that that's my fault or whatever, but there's a lot of families, because I go out to their houses, and that is the same story. And I'm starting to sell houses, again, that say their escrow is going up every year, and they can no longer afford to live here. So if the balance is thrown off, none of you are going to get paid anything. We don't have money for pensions. We don't. We don't even have it saved. Has anybody thought about the balance of the whole entire health? We need a foundation to build upon, and it's shaky. When you see families who are working two jobs, and then they have to get a second job, and they don't even have time to be here, which is why they are not here, anybody that is not here has texted or called and said they are not here because they are still working or didn't have a babysitter. So we're having a special town meeting without all of the information, and we're spending people's money without their permission because they cannot be here. And, you know, I would like that to be as a balance, because it's not an individual... Everybody makes it an individual battle, and it's not about a battle. We're all dying out here, and you guys have... We appreciate everything, but you guys have days off. You have health insurance. You have that stuff. We don't.
Okay, I totally respect...
And pressing on us, who then don't have it, and wondering why we're upset about it or why we're not here. And that's what I think needs to be said. And I would also like to ask the finance committee and whoever is in charge of how many tax titles, I would like to know how many houses are in tax title in this town so we have a full understanding, because we are paying, as a whole, for all of the tax title houses, and the town of Halifax will get paid back, but the individual houses will not, and those are the ones that are in crisis, and we're tipping more and more over, and I've been warning you guys against this, and it's bubbling again and happening again.
So I'd like to address a couple of things. We totally respect that there are people that may not be able to afford this, absolutely, without question, and we're not trying to shame...
It should have been brought up at regular town meeting, and we shouldn't have had this.
But regardless of that, I need to just say that I respect you a lot, Amy, and I respect people that if they cannot afford it, but we are volunteers as well, okay? We don't benefit, really, by raising taxes, but you should know that it is our job or our charge to make sure that we are on top of certain things, and I'm telling you that that's fine. If people can't afford this raise right now, we respect that decision, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't at least try to bring it forward. It's our responsibility. Again, I just want you to think that if this position became open, we are not going to be able to find a quality candidate at $95,000.
The responsibility of every employee in the town is to take care of the people who pay their bills.
Hang on. Let's keep some order, okay? Keep some... Yeah, I missed both the question and the issue.
The responsibility of the people who work for us, that we pay, is to work for us, and that needs to be a balance, and that's all I'm saying. Because nobody's against anybody, but it ends up that way.
If I could finish, please. And that is, you're right, people should get paid for what they do, but they should be paid a fair wage. We shouldn't expect somebody to make that much difference in their salary of what a fair wage was. If we expect to maintain the service, and Charlie Seelig is not chained to his desk right now, he could leave at any time, and if he does, we need to find a qualified candidate.
I don't have that information. I don't know if the tax collector's here.
Wait, point of order. First of all, one of the things that I remember years ago from one of the past town moderators, T.P.L.A. Smith, was we need to keep the discussion in the four corners of the issue that's being raised. And I understand that there's a lot of stuff going on here, and a lot of people who have issues that they have every right to talk about and share about, people feel passionately on both sides. It's really not a debate as much as a discussion. We need people to make points, not keep repeating them, and move on, because we will never get to the bottom of this. We obviously have people who feel strongly on both sides, and it will come to a vote. So I'm asking if there's anybody who has any new information that they need or any new points they'd like to make before we move this question.
All right. Bye.
Sir.
Kevin Rogers, 25 Ninth Avenue. I would like to chime in and agree that regardless of the merits for this article, these things should have been discussed at the regular town meeting, and special town meetings really should be for something urgent and pressing and not for bookkeeping purposes.
Okay, thank you. A couple other ones this side? Yes. Yes, you, I'm sorry.
Joy Marble, 248 Wood Street. I just want to say, from personal standpoint, I've worked with Charlie. Some of the people in this room might not have. He's got an open-door policy. Maybe people might be afraid to approach him, but I've always had really good experience with him, and not only that, he, with the 22 years, like you say, he's got so much seniority, why would we want to chance losing him? And Amy almost brought up a point, I'm sorry, that, you know, Plimpton, the next town over was smaller, you know, their administrators paid more. And I'm sorry, but because he didn't ask for the raise sooner, I really think he should get it.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
David Thomas, Forestale Drive. I would just like to suggest, I'm on the side of everyone here who's been speaking, but he agreed for his pay for as long as his contract is. Why don't we let him work out his contract and then moderate the increases? I mean, do we have to? I mean, I've been a precision machinist for 34 years, and we get 1% to 1.5% a year, if we get a raise. All right? Let's moderate the raises a little bit and let him not start a new raise until his contract is over and renews. That's my point.
Thank you.
I live in the Halifax Mobile Estates. We just became resident owners of the largest park in New England, at least. Our rent just went up $300 a month. Most of us are retired. Some of us are not, but we can't afford a lot more taxes. And what she said is correct. I mean, all of the governments, the state government, the town government, is financed altogether by the taxpayers. Where's our relief?
Thank you, sir. In the back, I'm sorry. No, let's go on. Let's carry this forward.
Erica Rossini, 6 Dear Run Road. I just have a question with the consultant that we hired some years ago for $16,000 to go over wages, and what was his finding for the minimum and the maximum of the competitive wages for the town accountant positions in the 10 benchmark towns that we...
For the town accountant's position?
Sorry, town administrator.
Administrator, okay.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
With the 10 towns that we research ourselves with.
So what was, your question is, what was the highest and the lowest in that range?
Right. So when Don Jacobs did his report, he did a minimum of what the pay should be and a maximum, and he compared it to the 10 towns, and I just wanted to know what those numbers are.
Do we have that information?
I don't have those specific numbers. I don't have Don Jacobs. No, it's a different study, and the previous speaker served on the finance committee, I mean, on wage and personnel. Do you remember what it was, Erica, back then?
Please, wait. You asked for an answer. Whether you like the answer or not isn't the issue. Can we have some level of decorum here? Please. Yes.
I did serve on the wage and personnel board for almost a year, and I don't remember these numbers being anywhere close to where Don Jacobs' numbers were. So that's why I'm asking. I didn't bring my backup.
So these were salary surveys that was completed just this week, and so they called the 10 benchmark towns, and that's what the information is based on, real data as of this week.
So how much was it off from what we paid that consultant, as far as the numbers were?
Again, I don't have that folder with me. This is...
So when the number came up for the raises, was the number that that consultant came up with...
For Charlie?
For Charlie.
Yes.
For anybody. Were any of those numbers even looked at this time around? When you came up with these numbers, those numbers weren't looked at at all? They were just the new numbers that you came up with?
Because we wanted to be able to provide the up-to-date numbers. Why would we use old numbers if we could just call and get updated numbers? That was the guy.
So I understand these numbers are the average of the 10 towns.
Yes.
But no one is making those numbers. So like, it's not like the next town over...
I can read you the amounts if you would like. I have those if you would like.
Perfect.
Yeah, okay. So of, let's see, I just want to make sure I have the right spreadsheet. Hang on. Okay. I'll give you the population as we go. So what we did is, we took this by prorated, you know, by hourly rate. So Akushnit is a population of 10,300 at 124,236. Berkeley is a part-time, but their hourly rate is 6410, which makes the salary 133,328 on a full-timer. Carver is 159,315. Dayton is 110. Freetown is 110. Hanson is 119,646. Lakeville is 109,597. Rochester serves part-time. Their part-time rate is $74.20 an hour, which relates to 154,332. West Bridgewater salary is 137,700, and Halifax is 95,434.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Those numbers that were just read, are those the numbers of, say, the person in town A, they've been there 15 years, and that's their number after 15 years? Are those starting ranges? Do you see where the math went a little wonky?
Well, I can totally understand that, but again, I want to remind you that with somebody being here for 22 years, you would expect that they would be at the top of their range. And I just want to talk a little bit about the insurance split. So we are a community of 50/50. Akushnit is 60/40. Berkeley is 60/40. Carver is 75/25. Dayton is 75/25. Freetown is 75/25. Hanson is 80/20, and Lakeville is 75/25.
All the questions. Yes, yes, sir.
So this is not, Summer Schmeling, 32 Indian Path Road.
Just reidentify yourself, please.
Yep, Summer Schmeling, 32 Indian Path Road. This has nothing to do with anybody's specific position in town, but I am currently on the school committee. I've served on the finance committee, and we are often charged with looking at our budget and the sustainability of our budget, and I know that upcoming, we have a lot of wage and personnel reevaluation that has been done, so we should be potentially seeking increases in many positions in town. My question is, has the sustainability of the overall budget been looked at, and if so, does the finance committee and the select board believe that with the potential of the upcoming increases and what we're asking for tonight, is our town budget sustainable? Keep in mind, every department's budget typically goes up every year, especially the schools.
Thank you. Can I answer, finance committee?
Mr. Moderator, the discussion the finance committee had, first of all, that was a great question. It did encapsulate this idea of sustainability, and one of the things that, with the data we just reviewed tonight, we can be sure that we're still able to leave a cushion on the table, that in the same way we left a cushion on the table in the last budget cycle. That leaves us comfortable to make sure that if there's any unforeseen issues that arise, if there's any, for example, special education transfers in or out into our district, that we're able to cover those expenses for those students. So the finance committee, after reviewing that, and even, again, tonight, reviewing updated financial figures for projections for fiscal '19, fiscal '20, is still unanimously in favor of this raise.
Other discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes. Please.
Mary Gravenese, 98 Clyde O'Barrow Road. I'm just curious. We paid a couple years ago $16,000 to have someone do an independent study of wages. We did nothing with that. We didn't give all the people that were recommended to get raises, raises last year, and now we're coming forward without a study that was objective and independent. We had someone call and get numbers from towns, and now we're saying we need to do these positions before all the people in town who had previously asked to have their jobs looked at. I think that's completely unfair.
I'd like to address it, if that's okay. And first of all, these are positions that we want to, you know, we want to have a contract. But I'm going to be totally frank with you people, and I know I may never get elected again, and that's okay. Really, this is how I feel, because I would say this to anybody if they come up after this. I'm going to talk to you about this study that has been my stinking biggest stinking nightmare. So this, we hire a consultant, which, by the way, let it be known, I didn't really think him, but we hire a consultant, and he does this study, and I try to stay completely independent of it. You want to know why? Because in 1994, 24 years ago, when I began my volunteer career with the community, I served on the wage and personnel board, and I was actually one of the people who developed the grading system, and I thought we did a fine job, and I didn't think it needed to be fixed. So I stayed out of it, because being the control freak that you all know that I am, I would go to the meeting, and I would have been sitting there telling them how to do their job, but I wanted to give this consultant free rein to do whatever he wanted to do. So he worked with it. He came up with these ranges, and again, we have a wage and personnel board that we can never get volunteers for. I don't think it's been full for a few years. And so what ends up happening is, when we don't have enough people, a member of the finance committee and the member of the Board of Selectmen have to do double duty. Okay? So we had a member of the finance committee, we have a member of the Board of Selectmen back then, and, you know, some of the employees weren't happy with the way things were going. They didn't feel comfortable with it, and so I end up being appointed to wage and personnel this past spring, reluctantly, to be honest with you. So I spend the entire summer evaluating every single position with an intern, and we're still in the process of it. Why? Because I felt like I needed to vet everything that happened so that people would believe the study, because most people weren't going to believe the study. So I felt like I will spend the entire summer vetting this whole thing, and it's not ready to be brought forward, because I wouldn't bring something that I didn't feel 100% confident in. So that process is still going on. In the meantime, we have, back then, I and this board had recognized Charlie's salary for years, and again, last year, there were positions that were brought forward, which I don't even want to talk about. I was the one who was presenting them, and they passed, which was great, because they were also underpaid positions. But at the time, I said, "The person that really is underpaid in all of this is our town administrator." And so we wanted to enter a contract back then, but we had so much going on with those three buildings, the budget looked awful, we were still trying to pursue the senior center, and so we didn't feel like it was the right time. And so when we were renegotiating with the fire chief, because we knew we couldn't do the merger with Plimpton, because we were trying to do it in a way that it would not impact your taxes, because we really do care, believe it or not, like, we are all taxpayers here, the finance committee, the Board of Selectmen, we are so mindful of that, and I want, if anything, at the end of the day, that you leave here knowing that we respect your wallet, and that if you can't afford something, I personally am not going to hold a grudge at all. None of us would. It is what it is, but it's our responsibility to bring forward what we think is best for the community. So when it came to Charlie's position, I thought it was the right time to do it, because, again, if he leaves, and again, he's not chained to that chair, we will all not be the same. Not that one person, you know, runs the entire town, but you have to understand the complexity. But if you can't afford it, and I don't really want to discuss even more, because I think you guys are kind of done with this, but just know, right, I know, I get it, I'm done too. I've been beat up. I'm fired.
So let's, are we ready to move the question? Yeah, I think we are. I'm going to try this, just because I'm crazy, and I'm going to...
Passover.
No, no, but you can't do a Passover before, it's been moved... Yeah, I think we are. I'm going to try this just because I'm crazy and I'm going to... No, no, but you can't do a passover before. It's been moved and seconded and discussed. You have to actually act on the first motion, passing it over. The way to pass it over, if you will, is to vote it down. So... Does it? All right? I'm being corrected as we stand here. So the passover, the motion to pass over is an appropriate motion. All right, so it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion around passing over this item? No discussion. Okay. So all those in favor of passing over this article signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And you opposed?
No.
Guys are killing me. I'm going to have the shortest tenure of any of your town moderators ever. I'm telling you that right now. Okay. Yeah. Can I do a standing? Okay. We're going to go to a standing vote. So, please get ready. Hang on. Two, kind of so... Okay. You also should know, in the sake of full disclosure of things, that a vote to pass over an article has to be a two-thirds vote.
Mr. Moderator?
Question, point of order?
Could you please clarify what a passover means? That being struck it down completely?
Passover means that the town is taking no action thereon of the article.
Thank you.
Yes, yeah. Oh, okay. So even if it's passed over? Okay. So there is an option. I have to, and again, to full disclosure, there is an option through the town meeting to reconsider, which is another motion, so that it can be passed over now and someone can move to reconsider it later in the meeting. Just so you're aware of it. Just so you're, that's just the way the bylaws are written. Say again? Do you have a point of question? I'm sorry. Why don't you go to the mic and ask a question? Because I didn't, I can't hear you from there. It can't be reconsidered yet because it has to be passed over, voted first. So we have our counters among us? Are you ready? Okay. Okay, counters. Front and center, thank you. Yeah, I'll make it very clear. Hang on. Once I get my counters up here. Okay. You are being asked, the motion is to pass over the article. So by standing up, you are approving the motion to pass over the article, taking no action thereon. So I'm going to ask anybody in favor of passing over this article, Article 10, please stand and remain standing until the counters have completed their task.
Okay, thank you. Can, you may all sit down. If you are voting no, you do not want to pass over this article. Please stand and be counted.
Passed over. All right. Wow. All right, folks. The results of the vote to pass over are 133 yes, 54 no. So it is a two-thirds to vote to pass over. Item is passed over. Go to the next article.